Hey Jim Levy, could you unmute yourself?
Absolutely.
I want to introduce you to Sally Mazzarella. I don't know if you can see your screen, Sally was Chair of the Planning Board and the sort of the Matt, I'm going to say she carried all the water and was the spearhead and 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 really the inspiration for the master plan and our comprehensive zoning update. Jim is our new planner Sally, we are really thrilled to have him with us. I think he's been with us for two years. And so I wanted you two to meet each other.
Jim, it's very nice to meet you. I've been hearing great things about you.
Oh, great. Thank you. Nice to meet you as well.
All right, let's let's open the meeting. Good evening, everybody. It's 6:00 PM. It is the 25th of October already. It's the Town of Reinbeck Town Board, regular Town Board meeting. Would everybody please join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks, everybody. I just wanted to thank Sally and Linda for joining us. I've made an introduction with Jim Levy. Let me just proceed with the meeting and then we'll come to your your discussion item. We have a public hearing that I'm opening for the fire contract with the Reinbeck Village Fire Department. The public hearing is open at 6:00. Is there anybody who wishes to speak to this? I'm going to leave it open until we come to the agenda item and then I'll close it. Maybe somebody will want to speak to it or join us who want to speak to it. I'm going to go out of order here with our Town Board meeting because we have a couple of pieces of business that Jim has joined us to. And the first one is the, okay, don't tell me, I know what it is. It's the zoning law changes for community solar.
Okay.
Okay.
So I have a presentation which I will PowerPoint, there it is, share screen. Hardly worth it. So I'm going to talk about proposed changes to the solar law, the solar power zoning laws to enable community solar. And if you look at the current laws, they basically limit the size of community solar arrays, or any solar array for that matter, that's round mounted to to what amounts to 1 megawatt, actually less than 1 megawatt. And at that level, a community solar array is not financially viable because of the fixed costs associated with creating a solar array that's that size. Probably the largest cost is getting connected to the power grid at the right point, which involves, in many cases, running high capacity wiring to a spot in the power grid that can take that amount of power. And then maintenance inverters, control circuitry, landscaping, fencing are all they're not obviously fixed because the larger the array, the more these costs, but there's a fixed portion of them that you can't get below. And then there's the permitting and legal fees, which are considerable. So this is basically the consensus among the developers I've talked to that say they need that's that amount of capacity. And for that amount of capacity, we're talking somewhere in the 10 to 20 acre range for a size. Okay. The changes that are being proposed are fairly simple. And these include not only what's required for community solar, but a few corrections or expansions of what's there already. And basically what this does is go through the different paragraphs in the existing solar law to this outlines those changes. So basically, we're gonna, we're gonna add the paragraph three applicability to say additional guidance from the new NICE cert guidance guidebook will be will be also followed. There are three paragraphs in section I that limit the size of the array. We're going to remove all three paragraphs. The paragraph seven that regards ecological concerns is deleted because it's redundant with the seeker requirements. Paragraph eight is a, I read it about 10 times now. I still can't understand it, but it talks to tree removal. And basically what we're doing is rewording it to be compatible with increased size of solar arrays and giving the planning board discretion to determine if tree removal is acceptable. Paragraph nine deals with fencing and basically what this says is the fencing around the array is behind the setbacks and it eliminates a redundant description of the setback requirements. So that if we change setback requirements, we only have to do it one place in the zoning law. Paragraph 14 says you new landscaping can be in the setback areas, which wasn't clear from existing paragraph. Paragraphs 19 and 20, the restoration requirements and 20 year monitoring and remediation requirements basically is the is to strengthen the code for the latest NICE cert guidance. And then there are minor edits in the decommissioning code. We, so I I recommend that we take the limitations out on power output because from the top, from the town's point of view, what we should be concerned about is what where it is, what it looks like, what how it affects the use shed and what ecological impact it has. All of these are in the domain of the planning board. How much power is generated is really a function of what Central Hudson and the New York State regulations allow. So that's it. And the plan is next week we will have a resolution to open up a public hearing to lay the new law on the table for consideration along with all the other paperwork that goes with with that.
Not next week at our next meeting.
Next meeting.
Can you, can you go back to full screen, please?
Sure.
Is there a red line of this available that we can have and put out to the public? And Jim, did you want to add anything to this?
No, I I think Alan covered it really well. You know, I talked to him a bit to to kind of pull together some of the thoughts on this. And a lot of the references that he made to NICE cert, or because NICE cert actually just came out with a new very lengthy guidebook a couple of months ago. And so instead of delving into the regulations in the guidebook itself, because it will change periodically, we just wanted to reference the guidebook itself. So you don't have to change the code every time they change the date on the on the guidebook.
And has what has Warren weighed in on these changes?
I don't know. I defer to Alan.
Yeah, we're I'm talking to Warren. We haven't, we haven't gotten the final wording on the on the change to the zoning law. But I'll consult with him to do that.
So Warren is is writing.
Knows what's going on, yes.
Okay, I'd like to see a red line and I'd like for that to be available to the public for our next meeting. And I just want to reiterate sort of why we're doing this because, or Alan, why don't you reiterate why we looked at this?
Well, we looked at this because we we want to enable community solar. There are a lot of people in the town who want solar, including me, by the way. And I have my house and my lot are not suitable for for solar, either the roof or a or an array. So I would, I would love to be able to buy into community solar and help the planet, so to speak. And I think there are a lot of people in the town that feel the same way.
So just remind me what the current module or what this is exponentially three times more or megawatts?
This is five times more.
Got it.
Yeah, so yeah.
Also, also, I just want to say we had hoped that our community choice aggregate would be an opportunity for everybody to buy into non fossil fuel generated power sources. But it turned out not to be because the rates were not competitive. So we we nixed that and we knew that we had to go back and look at our community solar law so that solar could be an option for everybody.
And just one more point, this four slide presentation is is posted on the town homepage website. And if you want to see the law itself, it's also available on the town website.
Great. Please make sure the red line is on there, too.
Yeah, I'll put the red line up.
Went Warren's red line version.
As soon as Warren reviews it, we'll put it up.
Great.
You know, Jim basically did it that way and we'll we'll put it up as soon as Warren blesses it.
Yeah, Warren and Jim will get together. Do any board members have any comments or questions?
The the only, my last question is this is floating? It can exist in any zoning district based on its size if it fits?
It's not a floating zone. It's 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 a zoning amendment for all zones. Floating district is different.
Thank you.
I mean, if you're going to do a five megawatt array, you're going to need a fair amount of land and given the setbacks even more. And given the requirements for visual impact and so on.
So it's mostly red large scale residential lots?
Yeah, possibly. Yeah, I mean, you're you're one of the
Maybe some commercial lots.
One of the places being considered is the Stamp Industrial Park.
That's perfect.
Yeah, there's something like 40 acres there that you could do that in. And that would be large enough for an array that's 10 to 15 megawatts.
That's a perfect place.
They have a natural buffer there.
Yep.
Yes. And as a matter of fact,
One at a time.
As a matter of fact, the people doing the industrial park have already been talking to solar array entrepreneurs, as you call it.
Perfect. Ed, did you have a comment?
No, I was going to say that they volunteered, yeah, that information about, yeah.
Anybody else? Linda, Sally?
Thank you.
Just that I agree Stamp has a natural buffer and so the visual impact will be diminished tremendously there.
Great. Alan, how many houses would a five megawatt array power?
You know, if you go on the internet, they 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 talk about literally thousands of houses for but that let me, give me a moment and I'll answer the question.
It's okay. It's okay. We can do that at our public hearing. Let's have that information there. Okay, um, thank you. Thank you, Jim. Moving along to the next thing, which also includes you, Jim. We have here Sally Mazzarella and Linda Kig and Linda contacted the board with concerns about concerns about development going on within the town and the need or and her desire and desire of a group of citizens for us to look at our comprehensive plan and zoning law to begin discussing what, if anything, has to be amended in support of our comprehensive plan as we face increased pressures that tax our natural resources and our historic character and the traffic on our rural roads. We're continuously looking at our zoning code here, this town board, and we're all committed, I can speak for us, to upholding the tenants of our comprehend, which is sort of like adaptive reuse, preserving open space, cluster development, and preserving the historic and rural character of our town. It is, it's been an incredible roadmap for us and our zoning law has, I think, made us the sought after town that we are. And now we're seeing an amazing amount of of people coming in and pressure for new development. I had our building department pull permits over the past four years and we had permits for 45 single family houses as well as, geez, I don't know what it was in phase three of the gardens, probably about 64 units. So we've had over 100 units of residential housing built in the past four years. That's that's a lot. And we know that there's more going to be more pressure for development. So let's look at our comprehend. Let's look at we can do within our zoning law. Another concern was what's happening on our rural roads as traffic becomes more and more pervasive. So I just want to say, Linda, to address some of your stuff specifically, we have no oversight as a town to go below the 35 mile an hour speed limit. That's controlled by the state. And the state, although there is a movement now, I think Jim and I were talking about this earlier in the finger lates for home rule to allow towns to minute, you know, lower speed limits. It's not there yet. But is there something we can do, a comprehensive look at all of our rural roads that would allow us to do traffic calming and more trails and, you know, whatever it is? So that's why Linda and Sally are here. We have Jim, our planner. We're looking at starting a citizens advisory committee, something like what we had before with our zoning review group, but more citizen driven with board participation. So I'm going to turn it over to Linda and Sally and Jim and let you guys talk about it and hear what you propose for us. And then we can, you know, put together a committee at our next meeting if that works. Linda, you're on mute.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to the board and I'm obviously thrilled that Sally, who's the the, you know, the the person who knows the what they call the institutional knowledge about everything related to the Reinbeck Comprehensive Plan. So the petition that we utilized and and got about 500 people who are Reinbeck residents and another 160 or so who are not, maybe many of which, many of whom live in the surrounding towns, particularly concerned about the Rockledge proposal before the planning board. And, you know, obviously wanted to make sure that everyone in the town and in and as well as village elected officials were aware of, you know, this very broad concern that goes through the seven voter districts of Reinbeck to really make sure that the issues that, you know, obviously this particular development raises is something that is, I'm sure, of concern in in every area in Reinbeck where development has either begun or is anticipated. And it would be, you know, great to have a committee, you know, as you had suggested, in which we can really work to making sure that updating the Reinbeck Comprehensive Plan for the more current, you know, just sort of timely issues that we are now facing. I, you know, I'm sure that in 2009, you know, the climate of the entire planet and the jeopardy that's that we're living in, living in right now is is really obviously much more at the forefront than I think it was back in 2009. And I think that it's a great opportunity to help Reinbeck as a whole really focus on the issues and see how on a local level we can make decisions and, you know, utilize our critical thinking to just come up with with ideas that turn into policies, that turn into zoning laws, that enable us to really address these issues and make sure that it's balanced. So, you know, we do want development. It it just needs to be reasonable. It has to be reflective of the thoughts and concerns of people who live in different parts of Reinbeck. I live in the RC 5 section on Acrood Hook Road. So, you know, when you move to the country, you really expect it to remain the country. And obviously the safety of people who utilize, you know, Acrood Hook, Vli, Berger, all the, you know, the the country roads, they all lead into each other. And and this is just one small part of Reinbeck. So, you know, to the extent I can be helpful and I would, I would love to take part in that and and see how I could, you know, just be a positive force in in making Reinbeck even, you know, better than it is already and and ensuring that it's protected for the long term.
Fantastic. That sounds great to me. Guys, are you on board with this? Beginning a citizens committee to help us look at revising and especially, this is so timely, you know, the the climate aspect of the comprehensive plan. I'm going to let Josh address that because we've been committed here to protecting our environment and client change. And Josh, why don't you talk about what we just
So I I just touched base with Daniel Salisbury, who is the liaison from Cornell Cooperative Extension and they have three basic things next year to offer us or work with us for. And one of them is sustainability related to the comprehensive plan. So we're hoping that we can package that with this. And, you know, update and moving to the 21st century, the comprehensive plan, which I haven't read completely, so I'm still trying to figure it all out, but I know from talking with everyone and trying to get our CSC designation that our
Community climate smart. Community, yeah, that's okay.
Does not include sustainability components, which is something we need to work on, so.
So, yes. Um, Jim, you know, you obviously you're going to be our planner on this project. And I'm hoping that Sally and Linda will agree to co-chair it and we can put a committee together. Does that sound okay with the Town Board?
Yes.
Sally, have anything to add?
Well, I don't know if I could add anything, but I really think the timing is perfect to reexamine the rationale that we use for bonus densities and increased densities in our more rural areas of the community. You know, we're living in changing times. Families have made major adjustments to their lifestyles. Our demographics have changed. You know, we have more diversity in the community and it's wonderful to see so many more younger families moving into the community. And we've worked hard over many, many years to protect the incredible assets that we have in Reinbeck. And I think reexamining our zoning law, our highway specifications, our comprehensive plan, all the planning tools that we use and techniques that we use to protect our rural roads, rural neighborhoods, traffic conditions, safety issues and all the environmental issues, you know, our wetlands, our streams, all this has an impact. I have learned so much more about the importance of protecting our forested lands. And there's, I don't think we've said very much of anything in the comprehensive plan regarding that. And all, you know, development has an impact on all of this. And I know that there are new techniques that are being used. And, you know, we've always been ahead of the curve in Reinbeck and we haven't been afraid to do it differently. And I think that is part of what has made us special here. And Jim, I really look to you and your expertise. You're young. You must know all the good stuff happening out there. And we need that. We we need your good counsel and I I look forward to working together on this.
Terrific. Sally, I'm so thrilled that you're going to. And will you two agree to co-chair this citizens committee?
I I didn't know that was part of the deal, but I guess, I guess, yes, Sally.
I'm sure you're on board.
Good for you, Sally. I, you know, I also want to just, it, we spent about $3 million on our comprehensive plan and it took years and years and years and years. I want to assure people that we're not doing the same thing again. This is going to be a look look adding language to address, as you said, our rural roads, climate change, you know, density, whatever it is that you committee people with our approval think we have to do, update the comprehensive plan and then come up with a set of zoning laws that we could enact. Probably not all bundled together, but several bundles, you know, you know, a couple at a time that 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 mesh together. So we can cut it up into, I don't want this to take eight years and cost $3 million. What is our timeline for this?
I would hope a year.
Is that you, Joshie?
Yeah, it is me. I I just, it's funny to me because David Chernak and others have been bringing this stuff up and now post pandemic.
So timely.
So it's, it's all been relevant and now it's at the fore. So here we are figuring it out. But I would hope that it's simple adjustments and additions to, because one of the things that David always talked about two years ago and went through this was that sustainability was not referred to in our comprehensive plan.
David Chernak is our sustainability coordinator that we hired to sort of oversee a myriad of environmental and sustainable projects for us. Sorry, Josh.
Yeah, no, 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 it's fine. Thank you for clarifying because it wasn't clear. But the the point is it's a piece that's missing. So it's not a huge piece. It's a small piece or a large piece, but it's a piece that's missing.
Who on the Town Board would like to serve for the Town Board? Josh?
Josh, where are you going? As he slides away.
Josh has three kids.
Do you have a choice?
I'd love if you did it. You're passionate about this. You have a choice. We can discuss this offline. We have our chair and our co-chair. We have Jim Levy. We'll come up with two people from the Town Board. Linda and Sally, I'd like to hear from you via email with Jim included, who you'd like to put on the committee. Let's limit it to, I don't know, you know, what, no more than nine people, including two Town Board members or
I'd volunteer if Josh does it, too.
Great.
I have a lot. I owe Sally already, so I don't want to duplicate that like her, you know, exponentially duplicated.
How, do you have an, so let's talk offline, Sally and Linda. Please submit names and pedigrees, just, you know, like this person does that it will shoot you some names of people we might think. Let's get it going. Jim, do you have time to take this on for us? Yes?
Yeah, Kathy and I will definitely help out.
Thank you, Jim.
That's wonderful, Jim.
That's great. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a, and we'll come up with a name for the committee, too. I think this is great.
Great. Thank you so much.
Get our highway.
I'm so pleased that the Town Board looks at this as something that's important to do and necessary and
It's exciting.
It it is.
I'm so grateful you're involved, you know, it just, it's wonderful. And Linda, for you to come forward. Thank you.
Absolutely. My pleasure.
Yeah, the Town Board and the Planning Board have been very good about making amendments to an array of planning tools when necessary. And I think it happened, they all happened in a timely manner. And they were responsive to specific issues. You identified a problem and you solved it. And I think that, you know, this is what this is all about. And I agree, we're not looking at anything comprehensive.
Thank you. Thanks for, this is exciting. Thank you all. Thank you both. All right.
So are we free to leave?
You don't want to stay for the rest of our meeting?
Oh, I don't know. What do you have on the agenda? Then just back out.
Whatever you want to do, whatever you can do. But Jim, I think we're, are we done with Jim?
I think so.
I think so.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you. Thanks, Linda. And we'll email, let's, I'll email you two, three tomorrow and Town Board and we'll go from there. Thank you.
Thanks.
Bye, Jim. Okay. You know, we still have our fire, our public hearing for the fire. What?
It's open.
Yeah, we have it open. Are there any comments or concerns? Okay, I'll leave it open until we come to that item. I'd like a motion for Resolution 2021 207 to hire hire clerk to zoning Board of Appeals, which was held over from 10:12. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Josh. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alan. I have an amendment to the resolution, the last resolved, to work 40 hours a week. Just strike out or when she completes her first 40 hours a week. This begins October 18th. Gretchen started on October 18th. She did tell me she was unable to work Fridays for two weeks because she needed to give her current employer two weeks' notice. So she has because she needed to give her current employer two weeks' notice. So she has been doing the job since October 18th, although not for 40 hours a week. She will start that this week, next week. So just strike out the last or when she completes her first 40 hours a week. It's beginning retroactive October 18th. May I have, I'll make the motion for the amendment. May I have a second for the amendment? All in favor of approving the amendment? Amendment to the resolution passes unanimously. We still have an open resolution on the table. Are there any further questions or discussions?
Do we have a second to the resolution?
Yes, it was Alan. That's okay. And for the public, we are creating a full-time job as a clerk for planning and zoning because, because we need one and we don't want turnover. We had our first resignation in a long time and it was for our beloved zoning clerk for the zoning board of appeals to take a job closer to home with the town of Myland and without evening hours. So we like to promote from within. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. I need, I will make a motion for resolution 2021-211 to approve our Rhinebeck Fire District contract with the village of Rhinebeck Fire Department. May I have a second? Thank you, Alan. Is there any, is there any comment or questions? Guess I have to close the public hearing too, don't I?
Yeah.
Yes.
I'd like a motion to close the public hearing. I'll take Josh.
Fighting for a motion.
May I have a second to close the public hearing? Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Come on, I got that.
All right, I gave it to you. I gave it to you. All right. And have an open resolution to approve the contract. All in favor to approving the contract? Passes unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Village Rhinebeck Fire Department. We're grateful for your wonderful service of our fire district. Okay, I need a motion for resolution 2021-212, authorizing the highway superintendent to advertise for the 2022 materials bid. May I have a motion? Thank you, Chauncey. May I have a second? Thank you, Ed. Is there any discussion or questions? All in favor? Bye, Alan. Okay, passes unanimously. Thank you. I need a motion for resolution 2021-213 to hire a part-time temporary maintenance department laborer. May I have a second? Thank you, Chauncey. Is there any discussion or any questions? All in favor? I, motion passes unanimously. May I have a motion for resolution 2021-214 to adjust the transfer station holiday schedule, Ed?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you, Alan. Is there any discussion or any questions?
This is really mean. We're just changing it based on this year or?
I think Christmas and thank, there are a couple of holidays that fall on a Saturday.
I'll just stop at the re-arch meeting for next year.
We want it, we want it, we don't want it to be closed on a holiday. We want it, we're closing on the holiday and open it on another day. All in favor? Any opposed? Passes unanimously. I'd like a motion, Ed, for the update of transfer station fees.
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second? Thanks, Alan. Is there any discussion or any questions?
Is this higher or lower or the same?
Lower.
Right. There's been so many of these anyway. Right.
Look, we took, we just took it over. We don't have, we didn't have information on how it was breaking. We want people to afford to be able to use it. You know, we, you don't want it to cost more than curbside pickup, etc.
You're ahead of me. You're ahead of me. So all good.
Okay. Any, any further discuss, oh, okay.
Is the daily use up from $10 or was I?
That's up to 15, yes.
Yeah, so it was $10.
Why is that, Ed?
Because we want to get those people doing that to buy the permit instead. It just might push them out.
Okey dokey. All in favor? Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you. I will make a motion for resolution 2021-216, creation of a capital projects H111 for the Thomas Thompson Sally Mazzarella new field budgets. Sally, that's why you stayed.
I also now know you're here.
May I have a second? I'll take Joshie. Okay. For the public, we are moving ahead with funding the construction of the artificial turf multi-purpose playing field at the Tommy Thompson Sally Mazzarella Park. And Josh has been working hard on this. And we've created a capital projects for this and a budget. So for the public, we're estimating a $1,200,000 cost. We have $185,000 of town inter-fund transfers, including the windfall revenues that we had from sales tax during COVID, whereas, I'm sorry, it was a mortgage transfer tax, which has been bumper during COVID. And some of the money we've put away, we are going to bond $815,000 next year. And we are anticipating at least $200,000 in gifts. So this million 12, this $1.2 million budget will cover the installation of the field and any additional engineering and attorney's fees, maybe with some leftover for lighting and fencing. But we'll be looking for further funding for that. Is there any other discussion or questions? Sally, you got anything for us?
Just to let you know that I am seeking some grant money. So I was supposed to have a Zoom call with Thomas Thompson this week and that had to be canceled. So I'm talking to them and reaching out to the Frost Fund and also looking for other funding to help with other amenities that are needed.
So thank you. This is above the $200,000 in, and it's fantastic. Well, we're, we're excited. And I know a lot of townspeople will be excited that the field is going to be built in the spring.
It's absolutely wonderful. And the whole idea that this is a multi-use field, that it's not only the soccer league, but the baseball league and other groups that are just thrilled at the opportunity to have something here.
Well, it's football and lacrosse too. And, yeah.
And field hockey. I think everybody has. It's not the seventies anymore, but great. Thank you for all your work on this, Josh. Sally, thank you for your help.
Thanks, Sally. Don't thank me.
Yeah, we're, we're, it's exciting.
Anything happening with this skateboard park?
Let's finish the vote on this first. I think we have an open resolution on the floor. All in favor? Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Anything, Sally, to answer your question, just take a break here in the agenda. We funded $60,000 in the 2022 budget for phase one of the skate park, which will go to buy the modules needed. We're planning on parking them in the asphalt area between the little league field and the tennis courts while we raise more money to build the permanent landing pad in cement and asphalt and fence it off in the area where it's approved in the park. So we're anticipating that, you know, next year in our 2022 budget, we will have the $60,000 to go out and buy the modules that are needed.
That's perfect.
The kids can go out and start using it while-
It's a great start. Yes. That's wonderful. Thank you. Thank you. This is a great contribution to the community and to the young families that will be using it. And some of the older guys and gals that like to get on that field from time to time.
See you out there.
Not me.
Okay, so great. That's done. I need a motion for resolution 2021-217 to extend ALTA's agreement from 10/13/21 to 10, I'm sorry, from 10/31/21 to 10/31 of 2022. May I have a motion, Josh?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ed. Is there any discussion or any questions?
We're just extending their contract. We, we've dallyed too far, too long, so.
I'm dallyed. It's a complicated project, creating a trail from, to link Rhine Cliff with the village. And we need to do more outreach. We need to-
Maybe we're in the weeds. Not sure, but we need a little more time.
Need a little more time. Takes time. Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you. I will make a motion for resolution 2021-118 to schedule our budget public hearing for 6:00 PM on Thursday, October 4th. May I have a- I'm sorry, what?
November 4th.
What did I say?
October.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to schedule the budget public hearing for Wednesday, November 4th at 6:00 PM. It will be a remote public hearing.
Sorry, Elizabeth?
Joni?
Wednesday is November 3rd.
Thursday, November 4th.
There we go.
Third time a charm. May I have a second? Thanks, Chauncey. Are there any questions or any discussions? We still have another budget meeting set where we will finalize our preliminary budget and release that to the public in advance of our public hearing. All in favor? Any opposed? So moved. Hopefully the public will join us, 6:00 PM, November 4th, which is a Thursday. Any comments or, or feedback on our, on our budget? Thank you. Resolution, I'll make a motion for resolution 2021-219 for our preliminary accounts payable abstracts. May I have a second? Thank you. We have 33 checks totaling $36,173.2. Are there any questions or discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? So moved unanimously. There are two pieces of new business. One is resolution 2021-220, application to the village tree commission for street tree removal. May I have a motion? Thank you, Josh. May I have a second? Thank you. There are two Norwegian maples on our right of way on East Market Street and Center Street that are rotten in the middle. And Meg Crawford has looked at them and recommended that they come down. You're, we are asking for permission here to ask the village tree committee to remove them or we will remove them how they to have them removed and we will replant something appropriate and as out of the way as of the power lines as possible. All in favor? Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. What?
Sorry to see them, I mean, the reality is we're losing two trees. We're getting two new trees.
And we're planting two new trees. Yeah, yeah. I mean, and, you know, we'll be mindful of where the power lines are and we'll pick something-
No, that it stinks because they, they gut the tree.
Got to get dwarf trees, not gigantic trees. Dwarf everything.
Okay, I guess we're, we're, to be continued. I mean, we do want cover. We want shade. You know, we want to mitigate climate change. They may not be dwarf, but hopefully they'll be correct.
Right.
I need a motion for resolution 2021-221 for AC and heating repair compressor part. May I have a motion?
I'll make that.
I knew that was going to be you, Ed. May I have a second? Thank you, Alan. Is there any discussion or any questions? All in favor? Chaunce? Hi. Passes, Chauncey, you in?
There.
Passes unanimously. Thank you. Is there any other new business before the town board? Are there any public comment or any comment on any non-agenda items? Or does anybody wish to be heard regarding anything else? Having here heard nothing, I will make a motion to adjourn.
Right.
Great meeting. I miss all this stuff.
Oh, Sally, it was nice to have you. Thanks for coming. Great, everybody. We'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Everybody.
Good night, all.